Welcome to the January 24, 2024, Meeting of the Palm Springs Planning Commission. Can I have a roll? Can you call the roll, please?
Chair Wermick.
Present.
Commissioner Alian.
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Baker.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Murphy.
Present.
Commissioner Callardine.
Present.
And Commissioner Rotman.
Here.
And it's just my pleasure to announce that this is the first time in many months we've had a full commission. Commissioner Olean or Vice Chair Olean is joining us after a four-month, six-month stint working for the city and taking over the Public Works Department. She's come back. And Commissioner Callardine was appointed by City Council yesterday. And Commissioner Callardine had been, had served actually with me for seven years on the commission, leaving, I think, starting in '12 and leaving in '18.
I failed my probation.
So, welcome, welcome to the, welcome to the commission. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Okay, can I have a report on the posting of the agenda, please?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Planning Commissioners. Our agenda was posted for public access at City Hall on the exterior bulletin board, as well as at the Planning Services counter by 9:00 PM on Thursday, January 18, 2024. Our meeting has been posted in accordance with state law.
Thank you. This time has been set, oh, an acceptance of the agenda. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda?
Move to accept the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. This is public comment. The time has been set aside for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on consent and agenda items, as well as other items that are in our general subject matter jurisdiction. Please note that we can't take action on anything that hasn't been agendized. Members of the public will be allowed three minutes. What I want to let you know is that there are no public hearing items tonight, so if you want to testify to the commission, this is the time when you would make public testimony. Thank you. Are there members of the public who wish to testify? On either, yeah. It's not, the item you're here for is a new business item. We have two new business items, but because they aren't public hearing items, testimony for them is taken at this time. So.
Hi, my name is Tim Mathias. I'm on the board of the HOA at Ascena, and I'm here to talk about the 40 lots that are going to be approved or that are up for approval. And what my concern is, or what I wanted to point out, is on the, on the track, the way it's laid out, the green space along Artisan Way, I think it's labeled Lot D, is going to be landscape outside the wall that's going up, the new wall that's going up, by Toll Brothers, which is great. But part of that same green space is owned by SunCal, and it will have different irrigation, older systems, separate meters, and it would really make sense at the time that when Toll does the upgrade of the landscaping that they're going to be doing, that they work with SunCal to kind of coordinate the overall development of that space, so that when it's turned over to the HOA, that it's all linked together and coordinated, and not two separate irrigation systems and two separate meters and everything else, because it will end up being one green space. And that green space will be between the wall and then down to the street, Artisan Way. So that, so my concern is that Toll and SunCal work together to upgrade all of that at the same time and integrate it all at the same time.
Thank you.
My name is Audrey Joseph. I'm a resident at Ascena. As our community continues to expand, some of the open space in our community is, it's not being provided for our dog park. We have one, we have this smaller dog park, and as people are moving in, most people have dogs. There is an open space here in this area. I'm hoping when you consider the item, you might want to consider asking the Toll Brothers if they can maybe fence it as a dog park. Thank you.
My name is Jeffrey Griffin, and I'm here from Cody Place Residential. I live at Cody Place. I've lived there since December of 2022, and I actually live on Cameron Center Drive, which is directly east or right in front of where Cody Place Commercial will be developed by Olson Trust. I'm also a board member for the Homeowners Association for Cody Place, and I just wanted to come up and say that I'm in full support of the Cody Place Commercial Development. I've had a chance to review the plans that, I believe, have been submitted to the commission, and I've had a chance to go through them, and I believe that they were revised from the original plan from 2006 that was approved by the commission, and I think it looks like a really great development. In fact, this past Friday, we had a meeting with our, our HOA Association and our Recreation Center there on the property of our HOA, and a representative from the Olson Trust, Rob Eris, came out to meet with us for about an hour and a half and went through the development with our, our community, and I feel like the Olson Trust has been very transparent in the way they have been able to work with us, and I'm just here to let you know that I do support the Cody Place Commercial Development being developed by Olson Trust. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Nancy Ferguson. I'm a local resident. I read in the Palm Springs Post yesterday that Lynn Callardine had been appointed to the Planning Commission, and I just wanted to come today to wish him well and, and say what a great addition. You can stop laughing, Lynn. He's just a great addition to the, to the Planning Commission, and I appreciate the City Council putting him on the, on the commission again. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak? Given that these are new business items, the applicants, I don't believe, are entitled to speak on the item unless they speak at this time. Before I close the public hearing, Mr. Newell, how, how were you intending on handling that?
It's really the commission's pleasure. If you would rather hear from the applicant when the item is heard, we can offer that, but if you prefer that they speak now, that is the commission's discretion.
I think my pleasure would be that we call them up to speak after staff report, if that's agreeable to everyone else here. It's the most efficient. Thank you. With that, the public hearing is closed. I move, I'm going to the consent calendar. It's Item 1A, and it's approval of the minutes of December 13, 2023.
I move to approve the minutes of December 13, 2023.
Second.
Madam Chair, I will abstain from voting on this, as I was not present at that meeting.
Madam Chair, members of Ascena.
Thank you. Can you call the roll, please? Yes.
Chair Wermick.
Yes.
Commissioner Alian.
I abstain.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Callardine.
Abstain.
Commissioner Rotman.
Yes.
My weird, my weird dress up again. Okay, you, you know better.
Sorry, we had some feedback from our Zoom participants.
From what? Ah, interesting, okay. Moving right along to new business.
And for the record, that motion passed 5-0.
Thank you. Item 4A, a request by the Olson Trust to amend a previously approved final development plan for retail commercial component of the Cody Place mixed-use development located at the northeast corner of South Palm Canyon Drive and East Mesquite Avenue Zone, PDD 314. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. So what I want to do for us is to provide a very brief background of this project before we go into the presentation of the slides. So, the Cody Place is a mixed-use development, PDD 314, that was originally approved by the City Council in 2005 and 2006, but since that time, this project has been amended four times by both the Planning Commission and the City Council. The original project called for an 80-unit residential, live-work, and retail commercial uses. As you know, the residential component has since been completed. However, the 1.26 acre retail commercial was recently acquired by the Olson Trust. So how did we get here? The project was originally approved in 2006 and 2007, however, because of the economic downturn of 2008 and 2009, the project did not move forward as originally approved. Since then, it changed, the ownership of the property changed hands several times, and in 2018, I believe, the Toll Brothers finally acquired the property and developed the residential unit. Toll Brothers did not develop commercial, commercial development, so they had to sell the, the two parcels for the retail commercial to the Olson Trust. So that is how we get here tonight. Now, the, the item that you have before you is to amend the final PDD for the retail commercial that the Planning Commission previously approved in 2007. So tonight, they're asking for an approval for a minor reconfiguration of the site, a reduction of the building from 15,000 to 12,300 square foot, changes to the architectural design to match the modern architecture of the residential development, the landscape, and materials. So tonight, what you have before you is to review and consider the site's plan itself. The amended architectural design, which is in keeping with the residential component, will be subject to an approval by the Architectural Review Committee. So this area view shows the overall, over, area of the site. So here, this was prior to the completion of the residential component. As you know, the residential component is complete, and so is the, the development, which is directly across from Cody Place. The Elan is currently under construction, with several completions that haven't been done. And this is just a recently snap of an area overview of the site. So in the background, you can see the residential development that has been completed. We signed up the, the last inspection about three months ago. So what is currently there, what you're seeing is just a construction fence to fence off the, the retail commercial path before the final completion of the residential development. If you go there today, it looks very different, because there was a condition of approval that required Toll Brothers to compact the pad to avoid fugitive dust from blowing around. So that was done, and the construction fence itself has been removed. So here are the two site plans that's before you. The plan to the left is the existing site plan that was approved in 2007, and to the right is the amended site plan. Now, the major changes on the one, on the site plan that was approved in 2007, as I mentioned earlier, is the reduction of the overall building square footage from 15,000 to 12,300, and the relocation of some parking spaces, in particular, these parking spaces to the east of the site, right here in the circle, and then the reduction of Building, Building Two, and then, of course, the relocation of the, one of the trash enclosures. On the new site plan, you will see where the, the parking spaces have been relocated, and then the Building Two, which has been greatly reduced from what was probably showing, previously showing here. And then there's also the redesign of Building Three. Now, I'm going to speak more about this area of the parking space as I go on with the presentation. So, but meanwhile, two of the other changes to the site plan is the landscaping, and of course, the additional parking spaces that was, that went up from 86, that was previously approved for the retail commercial in 2007, to 99 parking spaces. Now, here is the, and the reason I'm bringing this up was that this application come to, it came to the planning department about seven months ago, but we had several back-and-forth discussions about the location of these parking areas. And then, of course, the, this trash enclosure that was moved from the original spot to where it is currently sits, which is what the members of the community preferred. And the reason I'm bringing up these parking spaces was that when it was initially brought to, submitted to us, the issue was that we did not, we didn't want to have parking spaces facing across, facing South Palm Canyon, being a major thoroughfare. However, the code does allow it, provided it is well screened by either a wall or by a mound. So according to the applicant, having met several locations with members of that community and members of the residential side of the, of Cody Place, he stated that this is what they wanted, and he was moving forward with this. However, I'm going to leave that up to the Planning Commission. Again, here is just the enlarged site plan that shows the landscaping, shows the location of the new buildings, one, two, and three. Here is just a picture I was taking yesterday, showing the current condition of the site. So what you see here is that there is existing landscaping, perimeter landscaping around the whole of Cody Development. The sidewalks and the required palm trees have all been planted, and some other existing trees on the sides. And this is a continuation. So this picture right here shows the main entrance along South Palm Canyon into Cody Place. And the second picture is the street that separates the residential component and the two parcels where the retail commercial is going to be located. This, this, the reason I brought this, I took this picture to show you is because it reflects one of the conditions that was imposed in 2017, when the second amendment was made, where the Planning Commission had imposed a condition, asking the Toll Brothers, asking the developer to install a plaque representing the following officer that occurred, I guess, in 2009, I believe, I can't recall the exact date, but they are in the process of installing it. They've installed the two benches as the condition stated, and you can also see the, the flooring there. The only thing that is missing is the plaque, and the city of Palm Springs is in discussion with the city of Cathedral City to provide details of the following officer, so that the plaque could be erected when it's ready. These are just existing parking areas in the retail commercial area, and this picture shows the existing homes, and here, additional landscaping that's already in existence at the site. So, the next slide shows the proposed buildings, and the slide, the picture to the left shows the exist, the proposed new buildings, which represent Building One, and the one on the right is the existing final PDD plan that the Planning Commission approved in 2007. One of the reasons the applicant gave for making these changes is that, looking at current demand and the current trend in design, and in particular, recall that when the overall Cody Place was amended in 2017, the architectural design of the residential component was changed. However, that of the commercial did not change. So part of the rationale given by the applicant this time is to provide the kind of design that will at least have some similarities to the residential development, both in materials and colors in particular. So this is Building One, and here is Building Two, the final, the existing final PDD to my right on Building Two, and the proposed final PDD for Building Two to the left. I'm showing this even though this is in the purview of the Architectural Review Committee. I'm presenting this to the Planning Commission in case you have comments that you want to provide to staff in any way that could improve the overall project.
Just before we go into question, do you have more slides? Or is this?
Yes, ma'am, I'm almost there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, almost there. So this, and this next slide is Building Three. Again, the pictures or the renderings to my left is the Building Three, the proposed final PDD, and the rendering to my right is the existing final PDD approved in 2007. Again, these are just 3D renderings of the new commercial buildings. So my recommendation is for the Planning Commission to approve the site plan as proposed, given that the development standards that was approved for the Plan Development District are still in effect. The use did not change. They did not deviate in any way from the development standard, and they are not asking for any new deviation from the development standards contained in the Plan Development District. However, because of the concern that had been expressed by some members of the commission, I'm asking the commission to provide additional comment as necessary, especially regarding the location of those nine parking spaces on the parking spot. Madam Chair, I will conclude my report. If you have any questions, staff is here.
Before I turn this over to the commission for questions, I just wanted to confirm our purview. This is, the zoning on this parcel is the zoning that was approved when the PDD was approved, correct?
That's correct. It's the Plan Development District.
And so we're looking, that's the zoning. We're not looking at what the zoning would have been if it wasn't the PDD. And the second is that what's currently approved is the existing plan. So what we've been, and we've been asked is to change the existing plan. That's the only purview we have. We have the purview to change it, and we also have the purview to approve the footprint, so that the, the footprint possibly not the specific architecture of the So that the, the footprint, possibly not the specific architecture of the buildings except for comments, the footprint, the parking, the location of the landscape, the look, the request to increase parking, and to change the area where parking occurs is what's before us. Am I correct in all of that?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. With, with that, I'm going to go to the commission for questions, and I see one, Commissioner Rotman already has his mic on requesting to speak.
Yeah, a few questions. So, can you walk us through the actual connection between the commercial and the residential? Is there a gate or anything separating the two?
Correct. So if you recall, the, one of the pictures that I showed earlier on, there are actually two gates. If you come in, if you were to come in through Mesquite, you go in through a major access there, there is a gate separating the commercial, the retail commercial and the residential development. And if you were to come in through South Palm Canyon, there is a main gate there too that separates. So those are controlled accesses, so that there will be no random accesses into the into the residential development.
Have you, the, the big question in my mind is they're overparked by 19 spaces from the first application? And I'm just curious, since they're proposing to build less square footage, and I'll ask the applicant for the rationale for that increase, but have you done a hypothetical parking count on the two restaurant buildings to know whether that would increase from the, the 80 they originally applied for?
They would have had enough parking for those two restaurants. However, in speaking with the applicants or the developer himself, there is a possibility that part of building three might be used for another restaurant. And that's where, if you recall in the staff report, I did note that should that be the case in the future, they would need to come back with a parking management plan, subject to the review and approval of the Director of Planning Services. So it is because at this point, we know for sure what two of those buildings are going to be used for, buildings one and two. Building three is designed for a regular commercial, could be a phone company or thereabout. However, it could also become a restaurant in the future. I do not know that at this point.
Because on the original plan, they had a 3,000-square-foot commercial building that was identified as a restaurant. That was the northernmost building.
Correct.
And then the southernmost was also identified as, so that was about, what is that, 4,200, 4,300 square feet? So we were talking about 7,300 square feet of potential restaurant at that point, and they got by with just 80 spaces.
They would have gotten by by 86 parking spaces at that time, yeah.
And so we're comparable now at about 68. I mean, we're a little less still with the two restaurants, so that would, okay. All right. And then, these are kind of nitpicky things, but I went through the conditions, and there's a condition number 17 addressing the bus shelter.
So let me address that real quick. The reason we adding, typically on a final PD, we do not add any new conditions, however, because those, most of those conditions have been met by the original developer prior to this time. There isn't any of those conditions that is, that is related to this final PD, but they have to have a copy of that, not knowing if they had it from the, from Toll Brother. That was why I included it in their exhibit.
But there was a bus shelter built to custom.
Exactly, yeah. So most of those conditions have been met, except if the PC decide to add any new ones tonight.
Okay. And then, along the parking, proposed parking facing South Palm Canyon, they're calling out for a wrought iron fence, which does not comply with what I understand is parking facing a street.
That's correct. So what, the way the code, the PD did not address that. However, there is a requirement in our code that either a wall or a mound be used to screen those parking spaces. How, at this point, the applicant has used dense landscaping, they increased the number of trees, the number of bushes, the number of shrubs to, to screen those parking spaces.
Okay, but that still would not, unless it was a hedge, it would not really qualify.
And I will leave that to the planning commission for tonight.
And then, on building three, they have called out a pylon, which is 18 feet plus high, which will be for signage, and it's kind of an outrigger to the building.
Whatever, whatever you are looking at tonight would not include signage. Signage will require a separate application at that time, and that's why it was never referenced in this staff report. The applicant is aware of that, that that would require.
Well, my question is, if it's an 18-foot-tall monolith, you know, it's not really part of the building, it's specifically for signage. And I know it's not, we're not talking about that, and it's really not our purview anyway, but I'm just, as we look at this, you know, that element really stands out. And I'm just curious, what's, you know, what's staff thinking about that? Because it's not going to qualify for signage, I don't think. I mean, the whole thing would qualify as a, as a sign, and it's also potentially, because its location potentially could hinder viewing traffic, oncoming traffic.
Correct. So, no, there would be a separate review for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner, I'm going to go down the line, Commissioner Calorine.
Robertson, it's you again.
Welcome back.
Let's see, here we go. Okay. Let's see. Yeah. On the original plan, there was some little bit of park or something.
Can you turn your mic on?
I'm sorry. It is, I think it's not just, it's not close enough.
Is it on?
Is that better?
Yeah, he's got his mic covered. Hold on.
Okay. Ah, okay. There was some, there's some little park space or something right exactly there, and that has either been lost or kind of replaced, moved over to between the two buildings right at the corner. Is, what was the intent of that, do you recall? And what, have we lost anything? We're not having that function anymore?
No, not really. My, my understanding of moving into this, since this is where the restaurant is going to be located, so, yeah, there will be outdoor seating areas and gathering areas there. So that would be my understanding, but I will let the applicant speak more to that.
Yeah, I guess the, my question is, what was that originally intended for in the previous plan?
There was, on this, on this area, right?
No, on the far north of the side, right, right there, exactly.
I would believe it was just for another seating area.
Okay. So that would be only used if that was a restaurant or something adjacent to it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You had indicated that staff had some concerns about the parking that is located on the entrance driveway, the, the back parking, I think it's, well, right between building three and the main parking lot there. Yeah. There's some, isn't it, am I reading this correctly, that there's a drive, excuse me, to the, to the right of where you're showing, the highlight there? Yeah, well, right, right now on the, right there, yeah, you're kind of centered on it now. That's the entrance road, right?
Correct. I do not have, no, they, this is the area where I have concerns, is those, that little rectangular area right there, not, not on the other side.
I have a little bit of concern about possibly the, the back out, people just reversing into a main driveway. Is that driveway used at all by the residential complex, or is that just for the commercial?
Look, judging by the location of the two gates, I don't see the residents using that driveway that much. So if, to, as I mentioned earlier, there's an access from Mesquite, and there's a gate to the immediate right as soon as you drive into the complex. If you're driving along South Palm Canyon, there is another, that's where the main gate really is. So it would be on real occasions.
So, so in your opinion, that would be, that driveway would be primarily used by commercial rather than the residential?
Correct, correct.
Okay, so that would drive the numbers down a little bit. What's the fencing, is there fencing treatment along Palm Canyon or berm, or what's that, how does that work?
So if you recall, in one of the pictures that I showed you earlier on, there is, there is an existing tubular fences around the perimeter, and that will be, it will remain because the, that was approved in one of the amendments that council actually reviewed in the past. What the applicant has indicated that they're going to do is to draw adequate landscaping to cover or to shield those tubular fences, but they are going to remain.
The, do we normally have fencing along a commercial frontage? Or is there a particular reason on this site that?
Yeah, I'm trying to think of any, as I mentioned, a while back, there was a, an amendment specifically for that site that required the installation of those tubular fences, including landscaping, so.
Okay.
And that remains.
We don't recall.
Do you have that amendment? Because it isn't in any of our packages, it isn't referenced in the staff report.
No, I, I did not.
I don't think, it's hard for us to deal with something if it's not in front of us.
I didn't include it because it wasn't, I never got the request by from any of the commissioners to.
It should, something, if it impacts our decision, it needs to be in the package.
Yeah, I don't have it, Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
That's all I have at the moment, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Murphy?
Moving along with the fences, I was trying to make sense of the pedestrian access from people walking along Palm Canyon, moving south towards the site and along Mesquite. So my question is, can somebody walk us through on the site plan how pedestrians would access the site and walk through or across the site to get to the three buildings?
Yeah.
Because I, I do have a concern about the fencing, unless there's access points that I, I can't see on the plan.
Yeah, I will, I will let the, because staff and the developer spoke at length, we discussed that at length, so I will defer that question to them, but I will, the only points of access that I can reference at this point is the main one along South Palm Canyon and the one along Mesquite. But I would defer that question to the applicant.
If that is the case, then we're asking or expecting people on foot to walk into the property on Cameron Center Drive at Mesquite and through the main entrance, which is, I don't think there's sidewalks, it's just a driveway.
Yeah, so the reason I have deferred that question to the applicant was that, one of the rationale they gave was that in their several, one of the, in their several meetings with members of the residential community and the HOA, it was one of the conclusions that they reached, so I will let the applicant speak to that.
The other last comment I have is, private street B is the entrance and exit is fairly narrow, and cars come along Palm Canyon, moving pretty quickly through the Mesquite intersection. And I have, I share the same concern as previously stated, that people driving into the property are going to be potentially coming pretty close to cars backing out of those spaces. It's pretty tight.
I will review that, but the engineering department did review that. It met their standards, so they did not require for additional width on it, so, but staff will take note of that.
Yeah, staff certainly can follow up with our engineering office and ensure that there's adequate site clearance and distance from the roadway, should the commission move forward this evening. And, but as Mr. Robertson has said, this has been, the access points and the parking has been reviewed by our engineering staff.
How recently? In 2007 or?
No, Madam Chair, when a, an amendment to a site of any development is submitted, it goes through all the department's fire, engineering, and planning.
Commissioner Miller?
Yeah, thank you. I share some of the comments and questions that have already been made, but in addition to that, a couple of questions, I think, for Edward. Regarding the parking, on page four of the staff report, you reference the code section that allows for the mixed-use parking to be calculated, and it talks about mixed-use developments with a gross floor area exceeding 20,000 square feet, including retail, but not in the CBD. So is that including the residential square footage as well?
No, not at all. But if we are talking about the, the, mind you that in this development, there is also leave walk, so it's not just the residential component. So the block immediately north of the, the building three, that's a leave walk, leave walk unit, so that did, that fact, that was factored in.
Oh, okay, so including that, that trips the 20,000 threshold?
Correct.
And that's what allows them to take advantage of the shared parking?
Correct.
Okay, good to know that for code purposes, because if these three buildings are all restaurants, it's not going to be overparked, it's going to be underparked, just assuming the restaurants are going to be successful.
Yeah, and that's the reason staff had, is asking the planning commission to, if you, if this project, if this application is going to be moved forward, that a parking management plan be required, if in the future that building three is used as a restaurant.
And tell me a couple of things that might be included in that parking management plan. Would it go so far as to require employees to park off-site or things like that? Or how would you propose that three restaurants would be able to, let's say they were all lunch and dinner restaurants, what kinds of items might be added to that parking management plan that would allow it to function?
They could hire a valet.
Which would park off-site theoretically, I guess.
Exactly, and they could look for as long, they could look for an offsite as long as, within 300 feet of that location where that can be used as an alternative parking space.
And those could not be on-street parking spaces, or could they?
Correct, no, we're not including that.
Okay, so it's got to be a private parking lot?
Exactly.
Okay.
On-street parking allowed?
Not, not along Palm Canyon.
Nor on Mesquite.
Could be on Mesquite on random.
Driveways, the driveways.
Mesquite on random.
For the residential.
Yeah.
The other question I had, and I lost my place, oh, you had mentioned regarding the iron fencing that's up, that was approved as part of an amendment in the past.
Correct. So let me give you a brief background of, what came about, what, that came about was that when the project was not moving forward during that recession, so city council had wanted staff to address the issue of fugitive dust and dumping of refuse and migrancy, so they came up with that idea. So they came up with several plans that included installation of the tubular fences around the perimeter of Cody Place, including landscaping. That's how that came about.
Okay, and I understand the need for that when the site is, excuse me, undeveloped, but now that we have three buildings going in, and they presumably want to have seating areas out front if they are restaurants, and they want visibility to and from their buildings, I think the fencing needs to go. And if we're doing an amendment, which is what the process is today, I would think that if the commission saw fit, we could suggest a condition that remove that fencing.
I will, I will leave that to the pleasure of the planning commission.
Right, obviously, but the, the authority is there for the commission under this process to remove.
Because I mentioned.
Okay. And I, just briefly, I share the concerns about not enough pedestrian access points from each of the buildings to Palm Canyon and to Mesquite.
Madam Chair, if I can just add to the conversation, so you are correct, because we are admitting the plan, we are looking at those, those features of the site. They conceivably would also need to have some sort of barrier to comply with ABC laws, whether it's the one that's there now or something else. They would have to have some sort of barrier to prevent alcohol consumption, people going beyond that patio space. So depending on what that So depending on what that looks like, that, you know, could be something that would have to be done to this building or to the two buildings that have restaurants.
Commissioner Baker?
I have a question on handicap accessible parking. I only see four spaces, three adjacent to building two and one adjacent to building three, but none adjacent to building one. Am I reading this correctly?
So they met the required number, maybe not the, the distribution of them, so we'll have to look into that again.
Yeah, because if I'm handicapped, I would, in going to a restaurant in building one, parking over here by building two is not to my advantage.
Okay, noted so.
Although by the same token, I happy to see there are four electric vehicle spots. That's very good. That's all.
Commissioner Lian?
Most of my questions have been asked by my colleagues. I have the same questions, a number of questions regarding access, both from, for pedestrians from Mesquite and from Palm Canyon. And the one thing I, and I have lots of questions about the parking. One thing I want to go back and make sure I understand correctly is from the staff report regarding the parking count. As I understand it, were there not the previous entitlements? But, excuse me, we were looking for a mixed-use parking of the same number of residences and the same square footage. Forty, a total of 41 parking spaces would be required?
So if we were to go strictly by the requirements of 9306 of our code, yeah. That would be, it would be 300 square foot to one, one parking space for every 300 square foot. So that was how that came about. But that was not applied in this case.
But, okay, so strictly by ordinance, it would have been 41 spaces. However, the previous entitlements provided a total of 86 spaces.
Correct.
And now the applicant is suggesting 99 spaces.
Correct.
If, I know that we're in the air because we don't know how much restaurant is going to be potentially installed there, so we don't know how many spaces were, will ultimately be needed. Hypothetically speaking, if the ultimate users of the building, the, the least uses were only required 50 or 80 spaces, is there any mechanism by which the city could recapture parking once it's already been built? I think that on the whole, the city is not trying to pave over the planet and we're not trying to overpark places. So there's a likelihood, not only that we won't have enough parking, if it's all restaurant, but there's also a possibility that we could have too much parking. Is there some way that we could recapture that and convert it to green space or something else?
It is, that's conceivable. They could come back to ask for additional building spaces to, on, on those area or it could be used for different, different uses, yeah, that's possible. But there is no mechanism in our code that will require the applicant or the developer to do that. However, they can come back on their own volition and ask to have any other kind of accessory use as long as it is, it is consistent with the provisions of the Plan Development District.
Okay, and in five years, say, when the leases expire and new leases, new users come in, if a space that was not previously, not previously restaurant, wanted to become restaurant, they would have to get a CUP for that? And at that time, you would address whether or not they have enough parking?
It would be a land use permit, not a CUP. We will always analyze the parking requirements, yes, that's correct.
Okay, but if it goes from initially being a restaurant to later being a retail store of some sort, then you end up still with, you'd have more parking than was needed under that use?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Just in terms of my comments, many of, many of them have been addressed. I wanted to go back to Commissioner Calorjine's comments about, I think it's building three, and there had been a park next to what that was. I think the park space is still there between the two restaurants that was originally there. So when this parking in the middle was developed, we did lose a green space. And I, and that's, that's of concern. And we lost it for parking, which is excessive parking, for an overparked building. So I've, I've got concerns about losing that green space. I certainly share the, all of the concerns about the fencing around the property. One question, is there a fence of some sort in between this road, which is both access, I believe, for the housing as well as the rest, the restaurants and commercial? Is there any kind of buffer for the residential from this commercial use in, in interior to the property?
Well, the only, the only buffer is the controlled, the two controlled accesses.
And how would the controlled accesses work for commercial?
No, so the control accesses is for the residential use, it's not for the.
It's only for the residential use?
Correct, yes.
So that, so that there is a buffer between the two?
Correct.
It's just, given that our purview really is replacing a plan that has more, more green space, no, no fencing, and adequate parking for, apparently adequate parking for the retail that's going to be there, I think all that, that we're looking at, I'm looking at a reason to replace a plan I like better with one that I like less and why we couldn't just replace this with less commercial. So is there a reason from your point of view as to why we should be looking at doing this?
Speaking typically relative to land use issues, bear in mind that this, the plan, the existing plan was developed in 2005 and approved in 2007. So, so the, today's needs and today's development trends are way different than what it was back then and, and the demands are different from what it was in 2007. That's all I can, I can really say. I will, I will ask madam chair to defer that question to the developer. Perhaps they will have more rationale that they can share with you. However, we, we went through all the, the due processes, you know, that is required. We made sure we facilitated conversations between the developer and members of that residential community and trainer, not just members of Cody Place. And we went through about five different changes and this is what we, we arrived at a consensus of that this is what we can present to the planning commission. So I will leave that to the commission and the developer to speak to that.
Okay, and just for people to be clear, my, my question is why? Why create this park, this, this parking in between the entrance and building two? It doesn't seem to add anything but overparking. So that's, those are my questions and concerns. With that, I'd like to invite the applicant up. You can do a presentation, you've also heard our questions.
So good evening, Madam Chair and members of the planning commission. My name is Rob Aris and I am here on behalf of the Olson Trust. First off, thank you very much for taking the time this evening to review the project. I also want to say thank you to Edward and the rest of the staff for all of their hard work on this. And thank you to all of the residents of the Cody Place community and surrounding neighbors who we've met with over the past year. I say that because we actually, Mr. Olson purchased this property over a year ago and even before we made application to the city, we worked on trying to meet with the surrounding neighbors, meet with staff and try to put together what we thought was a win-win before we came in for formal application and then went through all of the evolution of the back and forth through the application process. So let me try to touch base on a few of the questions raised and try to clarify a few items. I also have with me our architect, Tim Bundy, from Bundy Finkel, so I can also have Mr. Bundy come up here on any technical questions. So, big picture, obviously, as Ms. Robertson said, this was approved back in 2007 and it has not been constructed yet in 17 years. We respectfully believe there's a reason for that. We don't believe the plan that is currently approved is viable. We don't believe that the way the buildings are shaped, the way they are oriented. We do believe the existing plan is underparked at a ratio of just about five to one. There was confusion over exactly what uses are there, restaurant, retail, how much restaurant, you know, going back in history, some things are a little unclear. So when we approached this and trying to look at what we thought was going to be the most viable to give this property the highest success rate. And I think it's important that we're looking at this from a couple of different layers. And we are looking at this also as an amenity to the Cody Place residential project, because this is their front door, right? So we want this not only to be viable, but we want it to make sense for the community that it is in front of. So for that reason, vehicular entrances were not changed. So those were left as-is. The one part we looked at is saying that we needed to have flexibility. Obviously, tenants these days tend to be more on the food user side. That's where majority of, of new leases are being signed. But we don't know that, we can't predict the future. So we wanted to, we wanted to provide some flexibility, assume kind of worst case that it's 100% restaurant, but also have that flexibility that it may not be 100% restaurant. And for that reason, we looked at trying to reduce the square footage from 15,000 down to 12,300 and then kind of back into what the right parking number was. Because parking was kind of always a concern, it seemed like, from, from many different sources. So backing into that, we got to 99 spaces, which is about an eight to one parking ratio. So we do a lot of commercial, we do a lot of retail and every city looks at it differently. Some cities look at it from, you know, how many seats as opposed to your kitchen and it's a ratio based on your seat count. Some people look at it purely from square footage. You look at it different ways, but I would say consistently on average, an eight to one on gross square foot ratio is very, very typical to be a successful project with 100% restaurant. Again, it may not be 100% restaurant, in which case, you know, we have a parking management condition which staff has recommended and we're in agreement with, so that if the future turns out differently than we think today, there are mechanisms to, to work together and try to solve those, those potential issues. We tried to cluster building one and two together to kind of create some synergy. And, and as it was mentioned, that is a art sculpture courtyard in between those buildings. So the idea is to really create what we hope to be two restaurants that are destinations and create some, some play there as a gathering place. So that is kind of why you see buildings one and two oriented the way they are. Again, the parking and then the entry off Mesquite is unchanged. Then as you move over to building three, that is more of a typical multi-tenant. We thought that could be maybe a single tenant, a two-tenant, or even maximum three-tenant. We don't think it probably is viable to split any further than three potential tenants. So that is why that building was, was structured the way it is. Building one and two are oriented where they open out toward the main corner and, and view up to the mountains. And so that's where the patios are, that's kind of how those buildings are oriented. Building three is a little different, and that building three is oriented more toward the south and the east. So that's where that potential patio would be. Let me touch on the fence for a moment, just to clarify. Currently, the plan has the existing wrought iron fence going along the portion of Mesquite, wrapping the corner on Palm Canyon and going all the way to that first drive entry on Palm Canyon and stopping. There's no fencing in front of building three. With that said, and hearing some concerns tonight, we have no issue cutting back that wrought iron fence for that whole length in front of the parking and cutting it back to, to the building two elevation for the reasons, again, there's going to be some sort of fencing for, for ABC, for any restaurants that want to have alcohol service there. Because on that parking, which has been a lot of discussion, that parking there is going to be lushly landscaped. Our architect can speak more technically about it, but it is a multitude of different layered landscape, the majority of which is a solid hedge. So that is what's, that's what's going to be providing that buffer, that coverage. So it will make that parking invisible because you will have that dense hedge in addition to all the other layered landscape in front and behind it. The other part of that is that we also, in the last submission, amended those nine parking spaces to be compact spaces so that you wouldn't have high vehicles or SUVs or trucks. Those would be lower profile vehicles in those compact spaces. And those are the only compact spaces proposed, is just those nine there. The other component of that, because a lot of thought was put into the parking, again, it was kind of stressed to try to maximize the parking without overparking. So that was the reason why you're seeing the way this site plan is shaping. I'm kind of giving you the, the evolution of it. That became the most efficient way to park the site with that lot. And because of the densely landscaped that I just talked about, also, this is a very interesting and unique shape of a commercial site. And it's a unique area of South Palm Canyon with the curvature that's occurring. So if you look at going northbound on South Palm Canyon as you pass Mesquite, you're really looking at buildings one and two as the street bends. And then you're basically getting to the driveway. So you're not really ever viewing the parking lot north of building two. As you come southbound on Palm Canyon Drive, you're starting to curve away from the site. So again, you're, you're starting to turn away and, and look away from the, the project and there's a median, so you can't make that, that turn at that point where that drive entry is, the, the pocket is further up a little bit north where the main entry to Cody Place residential is. So there was talk about pedestrian access. So again, we looked at it holistically and said, we think the pedestrians are going to be coming from the residence and those are all going to be mostly south and east. That's the vast majority of where all the homes are. There's really not much, I mean, it's a vacant lot and then you have the mountains to the west. Obviously, the lawn is, is getting built now, but that's a little bit further on the northern side of the commercial portion of this. So because of that, the, there is a existing sidewalk all along Mesquite. If you're coming from the east, either from one of the neighborhoods or Cody Place residents, you can access an existing sidewalk that's there today on the east side of the driveway of Mesquite and the drive entry. And that sidewalk goes all the way up. And then if you look at the landscape plan, we have included a cross right there at that first landscape finger over to a, a sidewalk in front of building two. So that's the connectivity. So if you're coming as a pedestrian from the east, you're going to go directly onto the property safely on a sidewalk. Then you're going to cross over to another sidewalk that will get you onto the whole building area of building one and two. That also would be fully accessible as well and meet all of the ADA requirements. If you're coming from the north, then you can access, obviously, just internally, the sidewalk that goes north and south in front of building three and then over to the rest of the project. Or if you're coming from South Palm Canyon Drive, you'd come off the main entry there, south of building three. There is patio and sidewalk there. And then same thing, you would then cross between the driveway and then over to the existing sidewalk that then connects you to buildings one and two. So we feel that's a very safe and accessible way to navigate through the internal part of the project. There has been, there's been comments, we had many meetings with the, the Cody Place residents. And I think security is a main issue. That's another reason why the fencing is important, I think, of that hard corner, trying to make it secure. There's also a pretty significant grade change as you go from South Palm Canyon to Mesquite easterly. And so, and looking at trying to introduce any other new pedestrian access points, it got to be very challenging as far as trying to introduce a point. You'd have to have some sort of stair, then you have to have some sort of ramp. And so, again, we felt the, the best way to attack this was try to maintain as closely as possible it was already previously approved. I'm pretty much sure if I tackled any other questions, I think, I think that was the main questions I had written down. If I missed any, again, I am here and available for questions as well as our architect. Thank you very much.
Since we are able to, do people have questions? Commissioner Murphy and then Commissioner Lian.
It's, I understand the security issue. And first of all, let me compliment the design.
It's, I understand the security issue, and first of all, let me compliment the design of this project. I think it looks great, and it's a development that's needed and would be appreciated in this neighborhood. I'm back to my one concern about pedestrians, though, because if you're, a lot of people will be walking to this as a destination, hopefully, from, coming from the south. They'll be walking along Palm Canyon, some that park on Mesquite, or live in that neighborhood would walk along Mesquite. And it just doesn't seem that friendly to me for pedestrians to access the site. So I don't have a suggestion, because I do understand the security concerns, but if you're wa-
Have a question?
Yeah.
It shouldn't be a comment at this point, it's a question.
So the question is, is there a way to not necessarily get away or demolish the whole fence, but to just maybe along South Palm Canyon, open it up enough so that there's a sidewalk entrance into the restaurant area?
So we did look at that, I think it came out of the town hall meeting we had last week, there were his pros and cons. One of the residents had comments similar, many other residents, again, voiced their concern over safety and preferred not to modify the pedestrian access as shown on the proposed plan on the screen now. We did, though, out of respect, go back and look at that, and I can have our architect speak more to that, but again, the grade change is problematic as you get closer and closer to that area of the site, meaning the, what is that, southwest corner of the site. So, you know, going northbound on Palm Canyon, going eastbound on Mesquite, everything then starts to go in a downward slope as you get onto the property. So you have kind of a natural berm, and you have even a retaining wall along Mesquite. So again, trying to create an opening up there would be a challenge. It would, to try to conform to ADA accessibility, I think you're talking about a stair step of some sort, and then, of course, if you do that, you're introducing some sort of ramp, and you start to eat into a lot of real estate there. So, again, that, it was studied, and I can have our architect speak further on that, but we just felt like it was not a viable way to do that, and we just didn't see the, again, we looked at it and said, you know, where is the majority of pedestrians going to be coming from, and the vast majority are going to be east of that driveway of Mesquite. It's not our-
Commissioner Miller?
Yeah, kind of picking up on that.
I had you next, didn't I?
Oh, cool.
You'll wait, okay.
On the pedestrian issue, again, you had mentioned you heard from the residents, but those are the residents of Cody Place, I'm assuming, right, regarding the-
Correct.
You didn't, did you have any meetings with the Takwetts River Estates Development to the south?
We did.
That's the, you did?
Yep.
That's the several hundred homes that have east-west streets that will need to go out to Palm Canyon, as this commissioner mentioned, in order to get northbound on Palm Canyon as a pedestrian, and to ask them to walk well beyond the restaurant pads to the driveway, to the vehicular driveway, or conversely, to go east on Mesquite to get in that vehicular access, I think is unreasonable, and I think the city needs to look closely at that. There needs to be some sort of pedestrian connection to serve northbound pedestrians on Palm Canyon when they get to their destination, which would be one of those two restaurants, and not expect them to go to either of the vehicular exits. That's what's so problematic with many of our shopping centers in the city, is we haven't looked at these enough as a, you know, designer, and there needs to be a pedestrian access point at that corner, or, as you say, as soon as it can be provided, given the grade change. There's enough room in there horizontally to provide ramping if you need to ramp it. I don't know the ADA requirements close enough to know, if you provide stairs, do you have to provide a ramp? And I think the answer is no. You can provide stairs and then point the direction for the handicap accessibility on the sidewalks. That's a strong comment of mine.
And these should be questions, just to Commissioner O'Leary.
I'll defer to my architect if there's an architecture, if there's a question on ADL, I'll defer to my architect.
Why don't you bring your architect up?
I have a couple of questions relative to security as well, and then some about the general commercial concept, what you're trying to accomplish. Starting with security, I believe I heard you said that, say that the wrought iron fence is currently there, that that will help the residents gain assurance by knowing that that was there, because it helped with safety or security. Is that security, are they concerned about the security of the commercial businesses? Or are they concerned about the security of their homes? And if so, how does a wrought iron fence keep the home secure?
So I don't want to necessarily speak for any of the residents, but I think what I gathered in my feedback in many conversations was that there's an overall concern of not having the right people access the site, and I think the site being the entire corner of Cody Place, both residential and commercial. And so the more access you provide, the more opportunity it is for someone who's maybe not a patron of one of these tenants, but someone who's trying to find a place to hang out, to sleep, so on and so forth, and then the more you invite them there, then they are on the overall site of Cody Place. So that was why, really, we want the patrons of these tenants to be the ones who are coming, if that makes any sense. So that's why, so that's, the security concern is trying to not make it as easy, which seems counterintuitive when we're talking about a retail establishment, but trying to make people who are actual customers versus people that might not be customers. I don't know if I answered your question or not, but I'm trying to say this.
I will move without comment beyond the right people. Let me ask this.
I think patrons is, yeah, patrons.
You've indicated, and it shows on your rendering on the front of the package that we have, and this conflicts with your supporting documents, the landscape drawings and the site plans, but this does show what you mentioned, which is a hedge, a solid hedge, so that you're essentially obscuring the view, the low view, from Highway 111, or from Palm Canyon. And I presume, because you said that that's what you're intending and not what is shown on the drawings themselves, is there any concern that people will use this, and here I would say the people who are not customers, the people who you don't want there, that they will then just go around, at night go around and sleep and be hidden by the hedge, so that then that becomes a security, the hedge itself, and then the blocking becomes a safe place for homeless people to sleep?
So, I mean, as far as the hedge comment, I'll let you speak to the hedge comment.
Go over that.
Do you want to go over that?
Yeah, I can do that.
Yeah, why don't you start with the hedge first?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Tim Bundy with Bundy Finkel Architects, and we did go back and forth quite a bit on how to define the corner there in particular, and for what may be not as clear is that there is a wrought iron fence that wraps the corner up to Building 2, and then there is a vine that's growing on that wrought iron fence essentially to provide kind of a partial transparent, still allows a certain amount of privacy, but it also allows some visual through it. The graphics may show a little bit more density on that. The hedge that we're talking about, where we're looking for the more dense use, is in front of those nine parking stalls along there, and that's intended to be, if you're familiar with the plant, but it's a Japanese blueberry that grows pretty dense, so it's intended to be a block for headlights from that standpoint. And the intentions are, again, to create an environment between particularly Building 1 and 2, that we, at this point, have a pretty good feeling are going to be restaurants, to create that kind of a critical mass where you've got a synergy between the two different places, there's outdoor seating, that kind of thing, so that there's activity that's going on there, and in the evening, when it's being used for that kind of purpose, that becomes identifying an attractive visual as you're driving up Palm Canyon or anywhere else, becomes that destination.
Okay, so I'm still a little bit confused on what's going on the corner, because this, again, you're showing a heavy hedge, and I heard that described, but that's not what is showing, and I'm talking here about the corner of Mesquite and South Palm Canyon. The plants, you're not showing vines there, you're not, but that is planned?
The landscape plan does call out for vines on that corner, it wraps a corner. The graphic of the 3D rendering shows the plant material, and it is a little bit more dense than it would be, it's got plant materials on it.
It's dense with lanthorn and things that are not vines.
It's-
But I'll leave that aside, I'm just picking a fight at this point, and that's not productive.
Okay.
Let me then skip back. I certainly understand wanting to do some massing of the buildings, and that you want to keep 1 and 2 together, and it does make a more, give you a greater impact visually, and I think that's a very good thing, calls into question, why are we reducing the size of the buildings if what you want is a visual impact? But one of the things that concerns me is that I see in the media vicinity, we've had restaurants go out of business and sit vacant, there are three that I can think of within, you know, 100 yards, kind of each direction, and if you look at the statistics, Palm Springs is certainly overbuilt commercially and with restaurants. So I'm wondering, what research did you do? What made you confident that you could make a commercial area with enough gravitas to get people driving to this location that arguably is accessible for the, I'm guessing, couple hundred people at Cody Place, but not really as accessible to others? And, and, and the side question kind of is, you guys aren't the first to have owned this property and to have the entitlements, and you know that, and you got what you got. Were you entitling it today? Would you want commercial there at all?
So, a few things. One, I do think the answer to, if we were entitled to it today, I would say yes. I think it works with the mixed-use components, we have the residential, you have the live-work, and then you have the commercial, right? So I would say yes to that. As far as research and kind of what we saw, you know, when Mr. Olson decided to purchase this property and put it in his family trust, I think what he was looking at is that, one, we're a big believer of Palm Springs, so as a company, we've developed in Palm Springs for over 20 years. Various, you know, various members of our company have had places in Palm Springs and currently do have places in Palm Springs. So we love Palm Springs, we are a firm believer in Palm Springs. With that said, we think this is a very prominent corner, right? Obviously, anything on South Palm Canyon Drive is very prominent, and we feel like there's a huge potential here to do something special. We looked at it, to be honest, and said, we can't build what is approved today, and if that's ultimately what this turns out to be, and this amendment is denied, and we fall back to that, I honestly don't see us building or anyone building what is currently approved today, I just don't. It just, it doesn't follow the rules of successful retail and restaurant. We feel like this plan does that, we feel like this is a viable plan, and we are confident we will be able to lease these spaces. It's not a large amount of space, it's, again, only 12,000 feet, so it's not like it's a huge undertaking from that standpoint, and we feel like we can get potentially three, four, or five tenants who are going to be very special, unique, and be able to succeed at this location.
And again, you anticipate that most of your customers are going to come from Cody Place, and-
We certainly believe and hope that a lot of our customers come from Cody Place, because it's the most convenient, but we're not, retailers aren't going to be able to survive on just 100 homes being their only customers. So we do believe we can create a destination here, we do believe we can make this a place that people want to come to in town, and that's why we're moving, that's why we're proposing to make these amendments.
Okay, and then one last question, I want to make sure I understand you correctly. When you said that this is not the kind of commercial development, that what's already entitled is not the kind of commercial development that you think would be developed today and would be viable in today's market, is that because of the square footage, because 15,000 square feet is too much, but 12,000 is right? Or is that because of something else?
A number of things, but one is, we do believe that the current plan is underparked at 15,000 feet, and only the 80, you know, somewhat spaces, at a ratio of, just like I said, five, a little over five to one, so we feel like that is underparked. We feel like the orientation of the buildings in the existing plan don't play off each other, and that, I think, is a big challenge. Dimensionally, if you look at the size and shape of those buildings on the existing plan, they're very difficult to plan from the inside out. Those shapes are odd shapes, and if you're looking from it, and how do I, where do I put my kitchen, where do I put my dining, where do I want my patio to be? Like, as I look at the existing plan, those are tough questions to ask. I think when you look at the plan we're proposing, and you say, where does my kitchen go, where does my patio go, those start to become very easy answers, and so that's why we believe this is a more viable approach.
So if you hear the commission expressing a lot of concerns and dissatisfaction with the fencing, with the kind of how it interfaces with the community, but plenty of flexibility on building sizes and spaces and configurations, do you think that there are other options that could be available to make this a viable commercial space for you that married both the interests of the surrounding community and accessibility with the commercial need that you have?
If I understood the question correctly, I think that from a building placement, from orientation, from all of those sorts of things, I feel like this is really what we are most confident with, especially, like I said, working through this over a year now and massaging it. With that said, I would say that we understand that if this moves forward tonight, it will be going to Architectural Review Committee. I think we can continue to study, you know, another pedestrian access point, we can confirm, you know, what, if the accessibility code allows for, as Commissioner Miller was saying, you know, a step only without a ramp. We can explore and continue to explore those details, and I think those may be able to, correct me if I'm wrong, but might be able to be handled in an Architectural Review Forum, but, so I think we're open to, you know, a minor tweak as far as what I think some of those concerns have been voiced at, but I think overall, we feel very confident and strongly that, I think, you know, the orientation, the sizes, and parking, all of that is in this best potential locations in this plan.
Thank you.
Before, have you spoken yet? Because I'm going to go next, but if you have, go ahead.
Is it possible to go to page 9 of this? Because it's top of page 9, the west elevation, it does show the fence in question with brakes in it that would allow pedestrian access. So would that be a possible solution to what I'm hearing tonight? Because that way, you could lock it up at night and close it, but during the day, it could be open, and people walking down South Palm Canyon could just walk in to the front of the restaurant, to the patio side of the restaurant.
And my apologies, Commissioner, which, I'm on page 9, but which-
Page 9, A3.2.
Correct. Which elevation of the four are you on?
West, top.
Okay.
There's a break in the planting material that's shown there, the fence continues across there. Part of that, what we were talking about, too, was that the ABC requirements to have a secure separation between public access and where there's-
Right, but it's just a break, so that would allow people to walk in, it would still, because usually, even I'm thinking of restaurants on Palm Canyon that have alcohol, you can still, there's a small fence, but you can still walk in and out through a gate. So it does say, no drinks beyond this point.
Well, I think the, again, the idea was to create the screen along the street edge there and have access-
No, I'm just saying, this could possibly be a solution to giving pedestrian access from Palm Canyon.
Yeah, if it's put in a particular location. Yeah, if it's put in a particular location.
Yeah, I think the trick will be trying to find where that connects from the sidewalk into, into the site, again, with that topography. But again, to your point, I think we can study that absolutely, and maybe, again, that could be something that is a comment to Architectural Committee.
Before you, I'm going to ask a question before I recognize you. Lynn, have you, have you already spoken? Have you already asked a question? Lynn?
The discussion here reminded me that we're, we have a major pedestrian access at CV Link, which is just to the north of the site along the creek, and that that may generate some extra pedestrian and bicycle activity to this site, and we might want to take that into consideration. That's just a kind of a comment in terms of future planning.
Just to say, I have a concern about designing retail out of a concern for homeless, homeless use. I think that's come up before with the city, and it's a concern of our city council as well as ourselves. Reduced use of the automobile is also on the radar of our city council in terms of what their priorities are right now for the city, and approving something that you can only access by car is a major concern for myself. Asking the question because staff has recommended that we reduce the parking so that we fit the normal standards that we have in terms of buffer, reduce those nine parking spaces. Do you want to speak to that?
Well, yeah, I'm sorry, is the question...
Staff's first recommendation to us was that we look in the area where you've created the parking lot, and they've identified nine parking spaces that would be reduced so that there would be a buffer to the street in that area. Can you speak to that? That's, I believe, staff's recommendation, it was their recommendation to you, and also their recommendation to us.
May I restate staff position on that? So staff's recommendation would be to restudy that, the location of those nine spaces. So part of the reason is because of its proximity to the sidewalk there and fronting, fronting South Palm Canyon. And there are different ways that that could be resolved by design. So for instance, the most that will happen is perhaps lose a couple parking spaces there if those were to be moved eastwards from its current location. And that will create additional buffer for you for either more dense landscaping, additional trees, or any type of landscaping that will create a good screening for those parking spaces. Staff is just concerned about, about the optics of looking at parking spaces along a major thoroughfare.
So my question is, that's something, if you were asked to restudy it, to move that or to remove it, is that something you'd be willing to do?
I guess, not to answer a question with a question, but I guess if the condition on that is that, let's just say, as an example, those nine spaces were completely removed altogether, if the city's desire is that they're okay with that parking count being reduced, because I think the direction from the outset was to try to maximize the parking on the site, and that's how it was tried to be designed, to be as efficient as possible. And then to come back and then try to make those spaces then compact only was, again, to address the additional comment.
Thank you.
So I think, I think we would be happy to restudy if the, if the desire is, or if it's acceptable to lessen the total parking count.
And then I wanted, architecture and landscape comments on that are in our purview. Are you a landscape architect?
No, but we have a landscape architect on the team.
Is that landscape architect from the desert?
He's done quite a few, he's not from the desert, but he's done quite a few projects.
A number of your plant choices, especially your trees, the heritage palaverities, aren't thriving in the desert. So that's, that's just a comment. There are a number of...
The museum ones?
The museum ones. They're getting blighted, and many of our major landscape companies don't advise planting them anymore. So there, I think, on your landscape comments that I would have, were we to send this, would be that the plantings be looked at for what's currently thriving in the desert and what's currently not being able to handle the increased heat. The other question I have is, you have west-facing patios, and I have one. And I have a 20-foot overhang over my west-facing patio, and by mid, mm, 3 o'clock, 4 o'clock, it beats through the glass in my house, comes in, and I'm wondering, it looks like you had overhangs, or you had a patio structure in front of your restaurants. How deep is that? And have you done a sun study so you know that your patrons would be able to sit there?
Yes, we've actually addressed that issue with, there's overhangs as well as the trellis structure that has Roman shades on it, so there's an opportunity to make that even more dense. We've got the, there's horizontal screens as well that are creating a kind of a louvered screen from the south side. We've got at least a, it's about an eight-foot shade on the south side of Building 1, and then it projects to the west, it's about 20, almost 20 feet.
Also got the mountain there, too.
Patio cover for that, for both buildings, one and two there.
Okay, it wasn't completely, I mean, it's not clear from your drawing, so if, do you, if you have a laser, can you just point that out?
The, if you look at the, the middle one on the right, area writing here, you see the horizontal lines that cut through the glass is part of that trellis structure, that structure that extends out, creating a patio cover that has the Roman shades on it. That extends out. If overhangs sticks, overhangs about six to eight feet. That is creating an additional shade structure for that south side there. Again, the primary focus is towards the mountains, and with the overhangs and the patio covers, we felt that was sufficient, along with the trees that are there as well. For what it's worth regarding the trees, I'm sorry, for what it's worth, the trees that we have shown are Mesquite trees in the parking lot, and then the palaverity. There's the existing street trees that are there right now, mixed with the date palms that are intended to be left in place at the moment.
It would be just comments in terms of Mesquite, unless it's thornless, it may create issues as well as safety, but those are, those would be comments that we might send along. Commissioner Rotman, do you have?
I have some questions. So one of the commissioners asked about possibly making, having some flexibility in the parking plan, and I'm particularly addressing the nine spaces along South Palm Canyon. And I'm wondering if those nine spaces couldn't be treated more as a plaza, and if you needed it at some point, that they could be easily converted back to parking. And I think there, if you look at the original plan, there was kind of a very long linear plaza in front of the middle building. And I think, even though it's in front of parking, I think you could do something with enhanced paving, you could do something with laced trees or planting in planters that could be movable at some future time, so that it actually becomes more of a park space and not so much parking, unless you actually grow into it and you need it. So I'm curious if that's something you would be willing to look at.
I think that's a phenomenal suggestion, I think we would definitely be interested in looking at that.
Again, it just gets back to the parking count, and getting, if we reduce the number of stalls right now by nine, how that works out with the overall parking ratio.
Right, but if there's that flexibility in push-pull, if I'm hearing you right, that it could be, if needed, available, and if not needed, then, then, you know, you make it more pedestrian, more plaza.
Okay. Let me just see what else. A lot of the questions have been answered. Just a further, well, let's see. Well, these are more architecture things, so I'll bring them up during the comment session, actually.
Okay, I think we are done with questions, and this portion is closed. This will be before the commission, initially for comments, and then we'll see where we're going. You want to start, Commissioner Rotman?
So I commend, I commend the design of the project. I think the buildings are very handsome, I, and this would be more direction towards ARC, I'll start with that, get that out of the way. I think it would be helpful to see all three buildings together in an elevation, because there's varying heights, varying designs, and I think it's important to see the relationship of all three buildings. Related to that, I think the west elevation of Building 3 is substantially different from Buildings 1 and 2, and it looks like the backside of something, as opposed to the front side, which is facing Palm Canyon, the major street. To me, your art plaza, the orientation of Buildings 1 and 2 remind me of what is potentially, what was potentially achieved downtown, where Starbucks is, where Tommy Bahamas is, they all have, you know, El Corso, they all have liquor license, they've addressed the separation required by ABC, and still maintain a really beautiful, open relationship to the public. And I think this wrought iron fence really kills it. And related to the unhoused issue, we have, when this was a primary issue, Cody Place wasn't developed, the project across the street, I think it's called Alon, was not developed. You have a lot of new development in that area. I don't think you're going to have an issue so much with the unhoused as you have in the past. I think it's going to improve. So I would suggest removing the fencing all along Palm Canyon, and partially up to, and even on Mesquite, I don't see a real need for it. I think you really want to be open to the public, and I think you're going to get more traffic from the public by being more open. In terms of the parking next to...
Commissioner Rotman, I'm going to take this as a motion that we'll begin to talk through.
Okay.
So if, think about it, think about your comments that way.
Okay. I, well, I think, I think it's worth exploring the idea of those nine parking spaces along South Palm Canyon, looking at them as potentially flex, some sort of flex space. I think that if they are, if we, the commission decides to leave them as parking, that the screening needs to wrap around on the south side of that, so that as you come from the south going north, that you actually screen more of the parking. So that would be on the north side of Building 2. What else? Let me see, give me a moment, please. Oh, the other thing I was going to comment on, the Roman shades, and again, this may be more for ARC. I think you need something more permanent, and a louver system might be a better option. So that's it for now. I may, I may ask to speak again.
Okay. I think people, I'm going to second this as a motion, and let people talk to it and talk, talk through what additionally you'd like to see or what you'd like to take away. Commissioner Calogine?
Yes, I think we have the, there's a motion on the floor, I think it is to restudy, to come back to us.
It's to restudy.
The issues that we'd like to see addressed, I think, would be the pedestrian access in general from Palm Canyon to the site, particularly the restaurant sites, and to Building 3, if it is a restaurant site. Also, to think about the access to the CV Link.
To which?
CV Link.
Okay.
The, there's some concern about the parking, both the parking along the Palm Canyon, the nine spaces there, and there's some concern about parking along the main driveway, where people would back out into the main driveway to exit the parking spot. I think there was some concern about the design of Building 3 being consistent with the other two, and there was a request...
And that's, and that's been mentioned, so you're agreeing with that.
I think that's most of my comments at this point in time.
Commissioner Murphy?
I don't have any further comments, other than the language is to create generous public access, ideally near the art plaza.
Near the...
Art Plaza.
Commissioner Miller?
Yeah, I have some comments if we're going to go forward with a motion to either approve or deny. I don't support a motion to continue this, I don't think we absolutely need that, I think we can give direction and provide conditions that would cover all of our issues.
Commissioner Baker?
I don't have any additional comments at this time.
I wasn't prepared for you two to say nothing, I was still thinking. In general, I agree with and support the motions as I understand them, and I will want to have a complete motion restated. Hopefully, staff will be able to do that before we vote on it. I, I agree absolutely that the fence needs to come down in order to garner any support from me, and I think that you'll be doing, the applicant will be doing themselves a favor by doing that, by opening it to a broader audience. I absolutely agree that times are very different now with the unhoused population or folks who are transients. I think that things are improving, Palm Springs is making wonderful strides, we're opening the Navigation Center in two months from now, and we tonight are making long-term land use decisions. We're not making decisions based upon the conditions today and as they will exist in the next five years, because these buildings, as proposed, are going to be here for 50 years. I suspect that society will change, and we will, I'm an optimist enough to believe that we're going to be doing a better job of delivering social services and resources that are needed to those who need them, and that this is, that should not be the driving factor. I will acknowledge that it is problematic today, and I can certainly understand residents wanting help today to get through the immediate future. Nonetheless, that's not what we are tasked with today. I'll also say that I am personally not concerned about the architecture of one building being dissimilar to other buildings, because I think that adds interest, and I'm not convinced that everything needs to be, I'll say Disneyland-esque, in building villages that look alike. I believe that we need to open up the view. I will also, the views from the streets and the connection to the community, so that people can come celebrate and use the facilities here. I'm not persuaded by the ABC requires that we have fences argument, because you can't do very focused solutions and areas very specific to a building and to the restaurant in it without making a compound all around it. And then finally, I did have one other thing to say, and I may or may not remember what it is. I do, I do want to say, I'm excited, I think you've done a great job, and the project will be wonderful, and I hope... will be wonderful, and I hope that it will be successful, because we don't need more vacant commercial buildings, and this area has been underserved, and I think it can really provide a wonderful commercial option for residents who are in that area, and who are in walking distance from it.
Madam Chair, before you wrap up, may I just make one additional comment real quick? So, from what I can gather from the comments from the planning commission, there are three main issues, and those could be added as conditions of approval.
No, can you, let's, let's, let's let us finish. I think the motion before us is re-study. I think that's appropriate. I agree with everything that Commissioner Alian just said, in terms of the fence has to come down. We need, we're planning for the future, we're not planning for two years ago, or in three years hence, but we're planning, we're planning an open, walkable city that has pedestrian access, and, and I think you've got really good auto access to your restaurants as well for people driving in. I know what I said before was that I liked the first plan better, because I liked the plaza across where the nine parking spaces are, and with a rework that treats that as flex, because it never may be required, I think that would satisfy my concerns about it. We did that in another property, and it solved, it solved, it solved a debate about parking. I think we've got a ways to go. The reason I think it's a re-study is we, we also have the obligation to look, look and make comments on architecture. I don't think we've gotten that tonight, we've gotten to our primary purview, and we'd like to see, see you come back with this. So, in terms of what the motion is, the, we want to see a re-study. We would like to see all three buildings in, in an elevation. I think there were some concerns about Building Three, and, and I'd like you just to think about it being attractive to the residents when they're on the drive, as well as attractive from the street, that we, we look at buildings from all four sides these days, and your, since your main, many of your customers are going to come from the property itself, from Cody Place, the front that faces them should be, shouldn't be back of house, it should be attractive. The wrought iron fence needs to be replaced or removed, and for you to think through the, the issues, the fencing, the liquor issues, in terms of fencing in that fashion. We have flex space for the parking, and the, we'd want to see something where the screening or the hedge wraps around the north side of Building Two, I think that was in the study. We want, we want to see you study pedestrian access to the restaurants, to Buildings One, Two, and Three, and, or pedestrian access to one, a single one, but see what works, and, from the street, and think, look, include for us access to CV link, and how people are going to access this commercial space from CV link, and, was there anything else? I think that covers it. So, this is, this is the motion.
Just to, just to confirm, was that a motion to continue this item?
It's a motion to continue and have it come back for a re-study. And so, does anybody need to speak to the motion, or should we call the roll?
So, it's a motion for indefinite postponement, then, right? Not to a date certain?
Well, it depends, it depends if you can come back on a date certain. If you'd like to give us a date certain, we'd be happy to do that.
It's not a public hearing, it doesn't need to be a date certain. So, it doesn't need to be published, so it's not a date certain.
And for the record, I would second that motion.
The motion was made by Commissioner Rotman and seconded by Commissioner Alian. So, the only question is, is this to a date certain, or is this?
I, I don't think that's really an issue at this point, because it's not a public hearing, we don't have to republish and re-notice it. It would just be us putting it back on a future agenda.
To bring it back on a future agenda, as quickly-
And I'm sorry, Madam Chair, may I just ask if I can make one comment?
Yes.
Okay. So, I guess, we would agree with removing the wrought iron fence completely, as that seems to be a pretty consensus amongst the commission, and, and look at adding a pedestrian access point off the South Palm Canyon, and then also make the nine spaces currently shown as compact a flex plaza. And if we can agree to those three items, I think the, I heard the western face, I'm sorry, the eastern face of Building Three, which faces Cody Place, that currently is shown as front doors, but I think the other three points we're in agreement with, and can make that today to study, and if those are conditions to Architectural Committee, we can make those changes in the plan to Architectural Committee, if that's acceptable to the commission and staff.
My comment was about the western face of Building Three.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I thought it was the face toward the residence, so, yeah.
Well, there's, yeah, it just from the street, I think the Building Three looks weak by comparison to the other.
And we would agree to, to enhance that to Architectural Committee as well. So, those would be the four things that we would, we're in agreement on.
Under discussion on the motion to continue, my comments would be, I think we can handle all of these things as conditions, and there's no need to hold this up at this time.
We still would have to add-
So, I will be, I will be voting against the continuance.
Yeah, staff is comfortable with recommendation.
We would still need to send comments to the, the ARC additional comments, which we haven't dealt with. This is dealing with the site plan issues, but we still would have to craft what we're going to say to the ARC. But it's, we've got two makers of the motion. Do you want us to vote on this to come back, or do you want to vote on this to?
The, the applicant, in his recitation back to us, said something that was not, as I understood the motion, which was, they would be willing to add an, a single pedestrian access on Palm Canyon, and I had thought that we had asked for a broader-
Right.
-revisit of pedestrian access, not limited to a single one on Palm Canyon. So, if there were a way to effectively handle that, I would be comfortable with not continuing it.
We're happy to further study multiple connections. We just, because we've studied this already, based on the town hall meeting, we know that additional pedestrian access on Mesquite is, there's a larger grade change, almost a four-foot-high retaining wall on Mesquite. So, I think there's better opportunity along the South Palm Canyon, meaning westerly side of the property, to get access either at the corner or on the west side, versus on the south side, if that makes sense.
So, I would be looking for on the corner, as well as somewhere along Palm Canyon.
On the corner would be acceptable. Yeah, that would be acceptable. Yes.
Okay, so, we have that. So, that handles the site plan issues, in terms of what we would approve. Do we want to speak to what comments we'd like to make to the, asking the two makers of the motion, are you satisfied?
I'm satisfied.
I am satisfied, and that is for approval tonight, for not continuing.
So, you're making this motion for approval tonight, but I think we still need to do comments on design to the Architectural Review Committee.
I would agree.
So, we, this is a portion of the motion on site plan?
Correct. So, we have the site planning issues that the commission is requiring the applicant to do.
Yes.
And then the next condition would be recommendations for the ARC to consider.
Correct. So, Commissioner Rotman, do you want to start that again?
Yeah, just to clarify, though, the, when it goes to ARC, it will be after the revised plans?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, so my comments on the architecture, I kind of alluded to some of them already. One, I think the canopy structures in front of Buildings One and Two, the Roman shades, I don't think will hold up over time, and I think you can look at other options. You have a lot of glass facing west, and I know you're dealing with building heights, but I think you should, you could take another look at how much glass you have facing west. I think their, Building Three, could, the western elevation of Building Three could be upgraded to be, look more like the front of a building, as opposed to the back. The, on Building Three, you have a pylon, which is 18 feet plus tall, which is an outrigger, and is called out for a future signage. That seems really bizarre to me, so I think you might want to take another look at that. And then, as I mentioned earlier, I think it's very helpful if you have the, all three buildings elevated, so that we can see the relationship, or ARC can see the relationship between the three. Plant material, I think the comments that Chair Wormick mentioned about the tree species for the palaberry, I also think, you know, you might look at it, but you can ask ARC their thoughts along the driveway, since you've got, they're, all the trees are all Mesquite on the site, I think maybe along the driveway, which is called, what, Cameron Center Drive, maybe you do a different street tree along there, just to give a little variety. And I think that's it for me.
The, the only other one is just to look at the plants from the point of view of what's currently able to handle the heat in the desert, and so that you, they do that kind of review, or you do that kind of review. Does anybody else have any additional comments? Oh, the only other one was to look at doing a hedge on the north, the north side of Building Two, to consider that when you're doing the landscape plan. And I think that's it. Commissioner Alian, do you want to still second this?
Sure, but I have, I have one more thing that requires information from staff. The, I heard a lot of concerns about the west-facing glass, and these, whether it's a canopy, or whatever we're putting up there, are way high up, so I'm concerned, would you normally require a shade study before this goes to the Architectural Review? Or is that something that we should recommend to the-
I, I think we should-
That couldn't be done.
We should suggest that, because the height of the, the overhang I have on my backyard is, is too high to protect the inside of my house.
But also, this is closer to the mountain.
It's the height.
This is also closer to the mountain, so you won't have quite the amount of sun in the afternoon, as you might further-
But maybe doing a shade study to make sure that, that the, where they're putting the shade, and the height is protective.
They will have to meet Title 26 anyway, right? Title 24, rather?
Correct.
That's correct.
Yeah, for glass and energy efficiency, so that'll come into play as part of the building permit review as well.
They've, they've got, they've got shade structures, and just to make sure they function.
They need to keep the space livable.
So, we have-
I would second that.
And just one last thing, since we will not be reviewing the flex parking and plaza, I'd like ARC to really take a good look at that, and how that's going to function, and the materials that are being proposed.
In particular, ground plane, what we don't need is more pavement or asphalt underneath the flex space.
And I'm going to call the question. I'd also like, when we're doing this, can we, can, would you be kind enough to send back to us the revised site plan that's going to ARC, just so we see what's, whether what we did match, what we've suggested matched what we wanted?
Yes.
Okay. Can you call the roll, please? And Commissioner Rotman made the motion, Commissioner Alian is the secondor.
Commissioner Rotman?
Yes.
Commissioner Alian?
Yes.
Commissioner Callardine?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
And Chair Wormick?
Congratulations, I'm glad we got through this tonight.
Madam Chair, may I request for a five-minute break, please?
Yes. The next item on our agenda is Item 4B, a request by Toll Brothers for the approval of a final development plan for 40 new single-family residential units in Planning Area 1A, Track 37706 of Plan Development District 231 of the Ascena Development located at 1,000 North Gene Autry Trail, Zone PDD 231. Before, we're going to get a staff report on this, but before we do that, we're not going to be able to hear this, or to make a decision on this item today. We will be taking comments and maybe some preliminary actions, but we were missing an accurate public integrity disclosure applicant disclosure form, which we need to be able to deliberate. So, staff report, please.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. So, this is an application by Toll Brothers for a final plan development district for Track 737706 within the Ascena Development. So, on November 19, 2000, November 6, 2019, the City Council approved the creation of those 40 lots within the Ascena Development. So, what you have tonight are the final development plans that should be consistent with the Ascena Design Guidelines. So, the, what I, what, the slide you're seeing on the projector right now is the overall area of Ascena Development. So, this area right here is the location of Track 37706. And this is the track itself with the plot plan. So, by the way, all the development standards, including setbacks, including height, density, are all consistent with the requirements of the Plan Development District 231. So, they are not asking or seeking for any new deviation from the development standards. Again, this is a plot plan indicating the distribution of the various building products. And again, this is consistent with all the development guidelines and standards for the Ascena Design Guidelines. And here is the street views of the proposed 40 homes. So, as, as been proposed, there will be three different floor plans. They are designated as Floor Plan 1, Plan 2, and Plan 3. Each of those floor plans, we also have a different, three different elevation schemes. They are designated as elevations A, B, and C. All of the 40 homes will be single-story structures. Sizes will range between, from 2,279 to 2,402 square foot. The architectural style is the modern series, which consists of the international, mid-century, and contemporary. So, I'm not going to take your time tonight, but what I need from the commission is to provide comments on how we can improve the proposed architecture, so. But here on the screen, I do have Plan 1, the front elevations, all the side elevations of each of the floor plan scheme, and the Plan 2, the same thing. We have the, the front elevation, and then the color color on this. We have all of this in your package, too. And this following slide shows the left, the right, and the rear elevations. The same thing with the international scheme, it has the left, the right, and the rear. So, I do want Planning Commission to provide comments that we could provide to the applicant, again, to improve on the design of this project. This is the mid-century. Plan 3, the same thing, and all the left, the rear, and right elevations. That includes the typical landscaping for each of the floor scheme. Each of them are to have a tree, and shrubs, and ground cover. All of the plant selections we are taking from the Ascena Landscape Design Guidelines. Again, I'm going to make my presentation very brief. All I will be asking for tonight is comments, and this will be coming back to you at the future date, when those comments have been implemented. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm available to answer any of your questions. The applicant is also in the audience to answer your questions.
Very quick comments on this, there, I think there are three, three areas. One is the, the architecture, and also the architecture as it meets or does not meet the Ascena Design Guidelines. The second is a, is two of the items that the public mentioned to us. One, the, I think you can see the landscape on page 28, L2. There, there are two issues in this. On the lower issue on Artisan, the Toll has half of the landscape, or a third of the landscape outside of the fence area, and the, the rest of it is original belonging to SunCal, which is the landowner in DeClarent, and that's probably 16 years old, and in not great condition, and they will have an obligation to eventually turn that over to the HOA in like-new condition. So, I'm just going to comment on this. The public brought this to our attention. One, one thought is, when this comes back to us, that we ask of Toll Brothers, and they're nodding in agreement, that they would meet with the HOA and with SunCal to come up with a unified plan that would eventually be turned over to the homeowners. And SunCal has agreed, or Toll Brothers has agreed, is that correct, that you've agreed to do it? Do you want to come up and just? And just introduce yourself?
Good evening, Madam Chair. My name's David Ergoan with the Toll Brothers, and yes, we do agree with that.
And then the second, and I had the chance to chat with you in between, was another member of the public asked if the green space might be converted into a dog park, fenced in a dog park, and you agreed that Toll would be willing to do that?
Yes, ma'am, that would be the open space to around Artisan, I believe it is?
Lot D.
It's in Lot, it's the green space, the green portion of Lot D.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Yes.
How big is, how big is that? Do you know the acreage or size of that area?
I have this civil engineer with me.
Yes, it's, I think it's, overall, it's a little, a little over an acre.
It's about an acre?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And, so, the, the other area that's before us is, we don't have the design guidelines in front of us to compare them to, but I, what my suggestion would be to send this to a subcommittee that would, to the ARC, ask them to convene a subcommittee with five members, three of their members and two of ours. If the group agrees to it, Commissioner Rotman and Commissioner Layon have agreed to do that, and to meet on the architecture, meeting the design guidelines and comments on the architecture. And then come, have, bring that back when this comes back to us, so that we can send appropriate comments onto the Architecture Review Committee. So, I don't know if people have comments, I've heard one person had comments on the architecture. Commissioner Rotman, if you had, had them?
Yeah, I, I have less issue with the contemporary, but the international style and mid-century, as I understand those styles, and again, I don't have the Ascena Guidelines to compare, they're, you're miles away. It's the, what you're calling the international style, looks like some contemporary Tuscan thing, and, and the mid-century is just a shed roof that is creating a building height of 19 feet for a single stamp, a single-story house. I have real issues with that, so. So, those are just two real general comments, but I think both of those styles definitely need to be re-looked at.
Yes, sir. We will take a look at the, and reevaluate that international elevation.
And the subcommittee would generally include the applicant if they want, is, am I correct?
Correct.
That, that would include the applicant.
Correct. And Madam Chair, I will also make sure to provide the Design Guidelines to the subcommittee members as early as possible.
Right. So, I don't know if people have other comments.
I do have a couple of comments from what I've looked at, and mine are not so much on the architecture. Mine are planning issues, massing, setback, and that is that in trying to create a neighborhood, this has a very homogeneous neighborhood. There is a lot of consistency between every single home has almost the same setback, which provides monotony in the street frontage, and there's a lot of room. You've got some, some properties that have 58-foot setback. I mean, you can, there's, excuse me, 58-foot backyards. There's plenty of room for varying up the setbacks. I think that would add to the interest of the community. You've also limited, I'll call them street trees, but actually the front yard trees in each, there's only two that are used throughout, and that, again, we don't have the design criteria, so I don't know what all is on the palette, but I'm guessing you've got a lot more to choose from than just two, two species of trees. The garage door on all 40 units is exactly the same minutes and exactly the same side of the house, using some variety there and just plain flipping the footprint. The same gray and white is used everywhere in the hardscape and in the, the architecture. So, my overarching concern is try to get some variety in there. Think about what's going to make an interesting neighborhood, and these are all things that don't cost a penny to you. A different color, different setbacks, different variety of trees are all things that you can do that will really make it a more interesting neighborhood, and I would encourage you to take a look at that.
Mr. Miller.
Yeah, just briefly. I agree with Commissioner Layen on the monotony of the colors and the beiges, grages, and all of the front doors are black fox for some reason. I would encourage some color to be allowed at least in the front doors, and I share concerns about the monotony of the streetscape. And I also share the concern with Commissioner Rotman regarding especially the shed roof item, the what's called mid-century. That giant one-plane shed is just too odd. So, let's take a look at that.
Yeah. For me, it's the roof line on the international style. International style is very simple, very elegant, and, and that in particular. But I had one question for the applicant for you to think about. The Toll's first subdivision in Ascena did a shared-use easement or a zero-lot line and created absolutely elegant backyard, side yards as well as backyards, and I noticed that you didn't use that again in this, but you easily could, and it created, I think, much homes that will have higher price points. And I was wondering if you would consider doing a zero, you know, a zero-lot line or shared-use easement, and I think you've got models for that, and it sold really, really well. It is actually my favorite layout, and I live in Ascena. That's a, I, I need to disclose that. I live far enough away that I can comment on this. But it is, your, your first models with the, the shared-use easement created the most elegant homes in Ascena. So, if you would consider doing that, it's not in our purview to require it, but it, I think it would add a lot of value to your homes.
Yeah, absolutely. We definitely look into that. The problem, I think, that we ran into, I think, with those zero-lot lines specifically on those lots to the north, fronting the golf course, we were proposing pools, and so the pools needed to be gated in for fall protection or pool protection, but we will definitely explore, you know, lots that are not proposing pools.
Yeah, it just, you know, I know you may not be able to do it on every lot, but it, I just, I just think you'd get a beautiful product out of it.
Absolutely. And one more comment I'd like to make is the package, I believe, that we submitted to you is missing our color schemes. So, that might break, that's definitely going to break up your, the monotony of what you're, you've been, being presented now, so we'll definitely make sure to include that in our next package. Oh, that's, that's, Ben.
So, so we have.
I apologize.
Lynn, do you have?
No, but I think he's referring to the site plan color scheme. Is that the one you're referring to, David?
Yes, sir. That is correct. So, we typically have about three to four color schemes within the elevations, which, you know, we, we typically do that on a plotting scheme, so we'll, we'll make sure to get that completed for you guys.
Commissioner Callardine had comments.
Yeah, a few, a few minor comments. One is for staff. I'd really like to see when this comes back. We don't have, really clear.
Here, what, what the Planning Commission actually does approve in these type of things? This is the first time I've been through one of these where we have the AAC coming after our approvals.
Right. We're making comments, but we did have a, a role in reviewing the Design Guidelines. So, doing this with three members of the AAC and asking them to convene the meeting, I think, is, is the appropriate way to handle this.
The, I, I really want to endorse your comment, Commissioner, about the zero-lot line, and I think that works, if, if possible, it works so much better in these types of houses with relatively narrow lots. Let's see. Street trees would be the last comment I had, and I know when we were approving Avalon way back in the year OT, OT, OT 1, when I was on the Commission, we had some concern, there were some concerns about the street trees not surviving because of the utilities and where, and we had to go in and do any sort of access to the utilities that, or anything like that. The street trees would be sacrificed or would end up. So, I wanted to see if we could make sure that the street trees are actually placed in a position that actually works, and I know we were, I thought we were doing some sort of condition on Avalon that had that requirement.
I believe, I believe that was also done on Muralon when Muralon, when it changed names and became a different.
Okay.
A different development. So.
Muralon, that's right.
We've looked at that, and we would ask the subcommittee to also look at that.
Those, if, if, when you have a successful street tree program in 30 years, it looks wonderful. Sometimes we let them die out or get, get sacrificed in between there, and it, it's not nearly as elegant in the long term.
And I just, I mean, I know people've talked about more, more variety, but the trees, the, the ones that you did select for Ascena were very appropriate. The Sonoran and the Halleverdy will survive, and I thought your, I thought your selection on that was great.
Quick.
Thank you.
Yeah, just related to the zero-lot line, I think some of the units, the front entry feels very constrained, and I think by doing a zero-lot line, you can open that up a little bit, particularly Plan 3. You know, you're going down a long tunnel to get to your front door, and then it's about three and a half, four feet wide. I think you could take another look at how you create the entrance to these units and make them a little bit more spacious, so.
So, do we need to make this as a motion to create, do you need a motion from us or do you just need these as suggestions?
Because you're not taking any action tonight, really? Well, you, you may make a motion.
The action we're taking is accepting his two suggestions of the dog park and, and meeting and coming back to us with some kind of a unified plan, and the other would be setting up, asking the Architectural Review Committee to set up this subcommittee with Commissioner Rotman and Layen on it.
Yeah, that could be, yeah, okay, make that a motion.
So, the motion would be to continue the item, to take the, to take to a, to ask the Architectural Review Committee to set up a subcommittee of five people, three of their members, two of ours, Commissioner Rotman and Commissioner Layen, and look at Design Guidelines and all of the issues that we've raised here today, including, including the sty, the, the home styles, the creation of color, street trees.
Setbacks.
Setbacks.
Massing.
Massing.
Product types.
If that's an option, I'll second it.
That is. Is there any discussion? There being none, would you call the roll, please?
Chair Wermick.
Yes.
Commissioner Rotman.
Yes.
Commissioner Callardine.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Thank you, and thank our audience for staying with us for so many hours as we went through the earlier issues. Planning Commission reports, requests, and comments. Commissioner Callardine.
Madam Chair, we have a huge public works project coming out, starting to go on in this, this city, and I don't think that we have any review or even comment or role on. That's the new master plan for the Palm Springs International Airport Terminal Facilities. I'd like to request staff to see if we could get at least a briefing on the, that project. That's, I was just going over it a couple of days ago and looking at it on the airport commission site, and that's going to be Mammoth, and it has a lot of major consequences for the city in terms, in terms of the use of the existing Westcler Building, and one of the, one of the options is to not use it and have a whole new terminal. One of the options is to keep it. And I was somewhat involved on the staff side, actually, in the last master plan, so I have some, some background in this, but it, this could be very big. It would really affect everyone's perception or people's perceptions when they come into town, being the, the airport is such a primary entry point. I'm not asking for us to have necessarily a formal review or to, to take away anything from the airport commission necessarily, but I would like to make sure that we're briefed and we know what's happening, because that will be the biggest, one of the biggest and most defining projects that's going to hit the city.
Mr. Newell, will that be coming to us at some point?
I believe it would be, yes. So, at some point, once the master plan is complete, that would come back before the Planning Commission for recommendation to City Council.
I'd like to see us, maybe if we could have a review before, before they settle on a final alternative.
Sure. Yeah, they've, so part of their outreach and kind of early planning of this process has been to get stakeholder input generally in, from, from the community. They have been reaching out to certain stakeholders and, and the Star Preservation Community to, you know, ensure that we're addressing.
That would be great. Just, we need to be in the loop.
Sure.
The biggest thing that's going to come before us that's our business this year is the zoning code update, and I would love to see us have a, a study session on what's going to happen, and then for commissioners, we're going to be talking and ourselves about what in the zoning code we are hopeful will be changed and highlighting items. So, I think planning with us on that sooner rather than later would be good.
Would that make the zoning code consistent with the general line?
That's one of the goals, yes. There's a fully, fully funded.
I know, what a thought, what a concept.
Commissioner Callardine, thanks to your work pushing this for, I think, the six years you were on the commission and raising it. I think at least once a month. I do believe that it's fully funded now, and it's actually going to happen, and it's great that you're back with us when it's going to happen.
Thank you.
And the, the other is that Council was a little surprised that we didn't know what their, what their, their goals are, their current goals are right now, and that we're not aware of what they, they prioritize, and I've, I've asked the director if he would do a briefing for us on City Council goals. It came up, it came up on the Starbucks property where Council had very different goals and had filtered into our discussion, and so I think it, it's good that we try and be in sync with them, and that could be, you know, a, a session at one of our meetings. Anybody else? Other, okay, and is there anything that's coming from us that's going to City Council for appeal or? Oh, are you going to announce the housing element?
Yes.
Okay, then I won't do it.
I wouldn't. I've been waiting four years to announce.
The planning directors report.
Yeah, so just happy to report that HCD, Housing and Community Development Department at the state, has found our housing element in compliance with state law and approved it. So, we're very happy about that. So, that work being behind us, the next phase of that process is implementation. So, there's things that our programs include involve zoning code updates, so that would be rolled into our comprehensive update to our zoning code. There's several, there's a lot of programs, so that's kind of our next phase of this process, but we are certainly thrilled to be on the compliance side and, and have.
No developer lawsuits, huh?
Right. No, no developer lawsuits, so we're, we're certainly thrilled about that. The only other cup, update I have is relative to the zoning code update. Thank you for mentioning that, Chair. We are expecting that contract to go to City Council in February for approval, and so once we get the green light from Council to move forward with that, we certainly would be having a kickoff and involving the Commission in that process, and certainly a study session would be a good way to kind of tackle some of these issues that we've talked about today in one of our projects, particularly parking. We know there's a lot more current trends that the city is really far behind on, given the date of our current zoning code. So, we are really excited about what we hope will be the approved consultant, given some of the background and work that they've done, and how it will help move us forward into the future. So, those are.
Is the state of our current zoning code really 1960?
I think we had one more update in the 80s.
No, there was another one in 2004.
Right. We, well, we have it, had it digitized in 2004, so we may have done some updates then, but, you know, we had the 93 general plan. We may have done some changes back in the 90s, but yeah, we digitized and maybe made some changes in 2004. But comprehensive updates, it's been a long time.
Who is the consultant that staff is recommending the contract be awarded to? Or is that not public information?
It's not public yet.
Okay, thank you.
If you could, if you could make sure that we see the proposed contract when it goes to Council?
Yes, we can email, email that to the Commission.
That, with that, I want to, is this, this isn't the first time since the new year that we've met, is it? Oh, I want to wish everybody first a Happy New Year, and then I want to adjourn to 5:30 on Valentine's Day, February 14, 2022, and I hope it's a, a short agenda, or there'll be a few, there'll be a few sweethearts that'll be unhappy.
Should we keep these, or should we?